For Shannon Bankey. And Eric is joining us virtually. We'll move on to the open forum. There were no public comments received for tonight. So we'll move on to the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, attractions, et cetera, to the agenda?
Make motion.
Okay, motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Five point O is the approval of the minutes from the last school board meeting on the twenty-sixth of September. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve. I saw vote. Motion by Danny.
I'll second.
Second by Scott, any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Six point O is the gifts, donations, and grants for the received through September. I'll make a motion. Okay, motion by Danny.
I'll second.
Second by Matt, any discussion on the gifts, donations, and grants? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. Seven point O is student council. Come on up.
We're the senior high student council. Our new president this year is Peyton Mo and our vice president is Isaiah Tuckett. One of our biggest events is homecoming. Our theme this year was Candyland and the slogan was Sweeter in the Valley. Coronation was on Monday, September twenty-sixth. It was a great turnout and we were able to raise money for student council by selling tickets to get in. We also raised money by selling homecoming t-shirts. We used this money to do some different activities like the homecoming dance after the football game. We also ran the door decorating contest this year for advisories to encourage students and staff to go some that week. We had a drawing for students to have a chance to win a small treat.
We are doing a secret teacher program again this year. Students choose who they like, who they would like to secretly gift throughout the year. And the teacher gives them as well. This is a good way to connect the students and teachers during this school year.
Do you have any questions first?
Any questions at all? Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to eight point O, the presentation of the consent agendas. Any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
And a motion by Matt?
I'll second.
Second by Scott, any further discussion on the consent? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Nine point O, monthly financials with Brenda.
Last month, I handed over the preliminary fund balances. I have not heard of any changes as of yet from our auditors. They are still finalizing a few last minute things, but I do believe they are, have started on the audit report. And also, I do expect to have that in hand by the November board meeting so that we can hand it out to board members and then have it on the agenda for December for official approval by the board. Enrollment, you'll see your agenda packet, page eighteen. We talked a little bit about that last month as far as where, what our expectations were moving all of the students forward. Back in June, we were down a little bit. You'll see a little bit improvement from mid-September to the end of September. We're down about three right now. But to keep in mind, we've had a lot of students coming in, a lot of students coming out. It's been very fluctuating every week or even every day at that point. So we'll see where we end up at the end of October, but definitely very active. Next month, we will have a look at our update to the budget from what the board approved back in June. And we also will have our official proof of taxation that will be at the November regular board meeting. Any questions?
Questions for Brenda? I'll call Brenda. Moving on to ten bills and claims for the month.
Make a motion to approve the October twenty-two board bills for three hundred and eleven thousand seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. September twenty-two manual checks for sixty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. And October twenty-two construction bills for twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents for a total of three hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion by Scott.
No, second then.
Seconded by Eric, any discussion on the claims and bills for this month? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Eleven point O is the proposed lease agreement with Perry Playhouse Childcare Center in the Old Appleton Myland Elementary.
So board, you got a chance to look at exhibit number nine there. And there is only a couple of things on that in that agreement that have changed from the current, or the agreement that was in place last year. The first is the amount of rent each month went up by ten dollars to three hundred and, was it seventy dollars? A month. And then on the second page, under meals, we just updated, you'll see the boldface print there, the cost of daily meals has been updated to what everybody else is doing across the district. And those are the only changes. So we've left a little bit of the history on how much they have paid in rent, just so you could see it. Also, the first day of move-in, just so historically that information will be available on all of these. And we'd be asking for your approval tonight of the agreement.
Any questions for Eric on the lease agreement? I'll make a motion. Okay, motion by Danny. Second by Matt. Any further discussion on the lease? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Twelve point O is the election canvassing meeting. I believe this has to be the next, Monday after the election or Tuesday after the election?
Yeah, the Monday after the election. The election's on the eighth, that Monday would be Veterans Day, that's the eleventh. And so we're proposing canvassing, the meeting that you hold to canvass the election results be set for Tuesday, November twelfth. So it's up to you if you want to change the time. Well, it's generally a very short meeting, so.
I think it's on the fifteenth, it's the next Tuesday.
Yep.
Not the twelfth, twelfth's the Saturday.
Yeah, Tuesday's the fifteenth. That's your election on a Friday. So we could do Monday, right? It's the fourteenth. No, Veterans Day, Veterans Day is on Monday, right?
Friday.
Friday. Okay. Friday, they allow the lease, so you got this. So what's Tuesday, the fifteenth or eighteen?
Nope.
Okay, and that fits the boundaries yet, right? So November eleventh to the eighteenth. Do you want to go at seven fifteen in the morning? Or do you want to go at five o'clock in the afternoon? Thanks, Dan. We have no way. I'm doing the political, you know, support of the Norwegian government.
Do you have a preference, Eric? Seven fifteen work for you?
That's fine.
Matt? I agree with you. Seven fifteen, then on November fifteenth.
I think you have to actually give a motion and second.
So take a motion, if anyone's agreeable to make that motion. Okay, I got a motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hosts, motion carries. All right, moving on to snow removal bids. So for MMM campus, only one bid from Infernal Concrete Snow. And it looks like a flat rate of one twenty-five an hour. And then on the Appleton Myland, the building tosses snow removal. And that's on a graduated scale depending upon what equipment is used to move that snow. So eighty-five for the pickup and the wall, skid loaders ninety-five, and if we got a little of that stuff, it's a hundred and five.
And that bid was actually approved last year, it was a two-year bid, so. The one that we got for the MMM building will be a new provider also. But that's the going rate, so.
I'll make that motion. Okay, motion by, excuse me, Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt, any further discussion on the bids? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Fourteen is the proposed change to the twenty-two, twenty-three de-learning date plan. Rick, do you want to?
Yep. And board, you can see it as exhibit twelve, if you have questions, Scott's here. But essentially, we just needed, last year was the first year we put it in place. We had it on our website and we saw a couple of areas where we needed to be more consistent. So those are represented on, with the changes on posting assignments and activities showing on page one and student attendance showing on page four in that document. I don't know, Scott, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, it was just a language deal where seven through twelve will actually be connecting with the kids at the start of each hour. And there was a paragraph on page one that got a little confusing as to, are they just posting Google classroom assignments? And so we just felt like we needed to clarify that before the winter hit.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve. And a motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Fifteen point O is the monthly building leader reports. So Robin's not here, but we got his update in the packet. Tony's not here as well. Scott, anything you want to highlight?
I think just everything that's in there. I mean, I can go over it, but it's.
Maureen, anything pressing matters?
No, nothing pressing.
Okay. Then Mark, Carl, Ed Association?
The English department just submitted a written report, but then earlier today, I sent an email out to middle school, high school staff to see if they were doing anything exciting that they wanted to share. So I just have a couple of things that did not make it into our written report. Band and choir preparing music to be played on at the Veterans Day programs in all three buildings on November eleventh. They'll help honor our veterans through individual and combined selections. The ag department is sending fifteen students and two advisors, Ms. Page and Mr. Olson, to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. They left today at three P.M. and will return on Saturday in the afternoon. And while they're there, they get the opportunity to tour various ager businesses, including a Creamberry Bog Landscaping Company fish hatchery and the Indianapolis Speedway. And they'll also attend workshops, a career fair, and sessions at the largest student organization convention in the U.S. And then the sixth grade will be visiting the state capital and Minnesota History Center, Thursday, November thirty.
Anything else?
We just see, we put it all in your packet so you can read it when you're available.
Thank you.
All right. Steve, anything to highlight?
New signings going out, deliver first, daycare insurance contracts will be going out this month. And the new facilities update contracts will be going out this month. That's all I have.
Adam, anything pressing?
No, I kind of, coming here at the end, website.
Rick?
Yeah, I can, Adam here, if you want to give kind of a quick update on the pool?
Yeah, we got most of the parts in. We were waiting on the boiler parts, we got them in, that's been repaired. About to be here still, just got a chemical feed pump parts in, so we can pump storm work in, feed the chlorine, whatever. When we get a little free time, we'll tear them apart and redo them, so. Better process, but hopefully here, I hope in the next two weeks, we can have the baby up there.
I just want to show recognition to at least the National Honor Society, and I think there was another group, wasn't there? Was it the Honor Society?
There might have been some just students that volunteered, part of the group.
Okay, and also some staff who actually went in and did some of the heavy-duty cleaning on the edges of the pool and in the pool room. Got it all cleaned up, so we're ready once the boilers get working to have people come in there.
And we have a qualified individual, is Adam qualified or whatever, who is qualified to test the water, monitor the water?
That's a, that's a good question, and we're working on it. But go ahead, Adam, where are you at with the water testing certification?
We got that, we got mine CPO certified by pool licenses.
Okay.
Two of us got it.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
As long as we're on it, Adam, what was the other training that you're, just share with the other training that you're participating in? For the certification stuff?
All the wastewater and the potable water we have. One of us has wastewater, one of us has potable, the other higher boiler licenses, we will be giving.
So we're, we're working on bringing them along, negotiations team set that up.
What work did they do on the pool when they had the referendum? I thought they replaced boilers.
No, I think they were replaced in, I think they're fifteen or fourteen. Everything, wasn't major parts that need to be replaced. Pressure leak valves were, all this, when it was on. One of the gas valves was stuck, we had to put in the gas valve in, so.
Wind turbine?
Just whatever written there, but I've had a couple of questions from board members and actually several from community on where, where's that at in the process. And Adam, you jumped in here too.
Yep.
But essentially, Williams has ordered parts. There is a provision that says you can't climb the, you can't try to fix it or climb the water tower if the wind's blowing twenty-five miles an hour or more, yes. A lot of staff have asked me to climb up there regardless of how hard the wind is blowing or not.
I did receive a text on Friday from Dennis, that he had received some of the parts and he was going to come out Saturday and do some workout. I have a chance to ask if he made it out or not. I sent him a text, but I haven't heard the response back on it.
Send it back there.
Adam, you're supposed to give a little, a little downtime when I try to be funny up here.
Oh, mom, I'm on my accent.
Anyway, the third thing on there is, Adam also talked to me about the outdoor greenhouse, turning that basically, or possibly considering turning it into a cold storage area. It's not used as a greenhouse anymore, it's in pretty bad shape in terms of being functional. He's got some ideas for what we would do with it. But in the meantime, we're also trying to ramp up in the vocational ag area. And we have an indoor greenhouse, it's part of the grow lab area, it's part of the classroom suite there. And so we're, we're looking at that internally, like what would we need to do to make that functional? Where they provide lighting, moisture, and heat or cooling? And so that's a, that's something to be considered. Also, the ag teachers talked to Scott and I about, they might be interested in trying to get a grant to have a greenhouse that would be built back there one day. There is nobody really interested in repairing that facility that's, that I'm aware of anyway at this point. But it's something that we're looking at. I would just say that we, that I was part of building a grow lab or a greenhouse. And generally, the more, you know, the, the thing that's probably more popular today is to do something where you can control the, the light, the moisture, and the temperature. And that was, is usually some kind of an indoor grow lab. It requires some special kind of lighting in addition to what we already have there. So we're looking at that, we'll be back to you before we spend any money on it. But if we're going to ramp up in the ag area, we want to have an area for those classes to grow, grow plants. Actually, it can be a great fundraiser too, if we hooked up with Bayer or Monsanto or one of the local companies. Where I was before, they, they gave our students a dollar a seed to plant five hundred or a thousand plants to get them started. And then they turn around and sell them, do it over there, do it with them. So we've talked a little bit that that would be a very positive student kind of a project that would turn into a positive fundraiser and be a partnership with some of the ag-related industries, businesses. Any questions on that, or you got anything to add to that, Adam?
So you know, most of the structure is there. We just have to remove a lot of those panels and get tin and the garage door. But most of like the actual structure, we have to fill it in a little bit, because right now it's just a few posts, so we have to fill it in a little bit, two-by-six, two-by-four wall or whatever. But there wouldn't be any major construction going on.
And then board, the last thing is just want to give you an update. So as you know, in May thirtieth, we had some wind damage and rain damage at the Madison site. Adam met with the adjusters today. And they were in to do an assessment, an estimate of how much damage there is or isn't. We turned it into the insurance company we had at that time. Because remember, this summer, we changed insurance companies. But we had fully paid our premium and they were our insurer at that time, so they're responsible of orders. Now, if it was damage caused because of neglect, what we've learned is our insurance company will work with their insurance company to try to sort through all that. But that's something they'll, they'll take care of, and we're not part of that picture. So we're looking to get some estimates on what is the damage to the ceiling area and the gymnasium and also the floor. And we'll get back to you once we know more about that. Anything else you learned today, Adam, that I haven't shared?
No, I haven't heard a report back. We had West Central roping there today to do some test cuts to see if underneath the membrane was saturated still. So we'll learn more here next week on that.
Okay. Then under item E, there's school board committee assignments. If you look at that page, I would need us all to really pay attention to those committee assignments because some of those assignments have to do with other entities that have asked me to remind everybody about board membership because, like as an example, the MIRVET board that Shannon's on, you know, she isn't here tonight. They, that's actually part of another board of directors, and they need to have at least a quorum, show up for the meetings. So if you happen to be in a situation like that, you're probably hearing about those kind of meetings from somebody other than me because they're coming out from the MIRVET leadership team. And I would just ask you to pay attention. I think if one of you are on a committee like that and can't go, if you let me know, or if you reach out to another board member, they actually are open to letting somebody else go and represent your board member there. They have a proxy to vote. But we've got to do our part to make sure they all thrive if, if we're a member of the board also. So it's just awareness. And then do we usually reappoint the committee at the first of the year? So you can look at that to see what kind of committees you might want to be on, because we'll be doing this in two months. And then there is a reminder of all kinds of learning opportunities that MSBA puts on in case you're interested in networking with other schools.
What was the committee meeting Shannon?
We need Shannon to be part of the staff development committee. What was it, Charlie?
She had volunteered, I see on here Danny is listed. I didn't realize that anyone was assigned to it.
Oh, okay, and if there is somebody?
Yeah, but Shannon had volunteered when I sent out that email.
Now, if Dan gets on it and he, we were willing to move the meeting to Norway, right?
I mean, it's funded. Yeah, right. I'll take a trip to Norway.
You can swing it, Dan.
We'll just, we'll just reschedule the staff.
So I guess it would be Dan is already on the committee then. And I think if, like if you are going to be gone, if you want to ask Shannon or one of the other people to attend in your place for that meeting, that's not the idea, because we do need representation, right?
School board committees, we should probably touch on, on the meeting that just occurred prior to this. So Rick had asked old architects to come and do kind of a site evaluation for us on a few different components. So one is our athletic facilities out here that are outside, as well as the air handlers and the dehumidification, et cetera, for this building. And so they've come up with some, had a preliminary numbers of what that looks like. And unfortunately, it's not cheap. All told, if we look at all of the air handling within this facility, which includes controllers and apples and all that stuff, it's about twelve point six million. They looked at the baseball field out here. That's estimated at nine hundred and twenty thousand. Tennis courts, they cost around a million dollars to basically tear up what we've got and rebuild correctly this time and have the great drainage, et cetera, so we don't have these heaves. And then the track, there's, if we just scrape off the track, put the new rubber coating back on, it's about two hundred and twenty thousand. If we need to go down and mill some of that asphalt that's below there, it jumps to about three hundred and fifty thousand. So the buildings and grounds, which is myself, Eric, and Scott, will have to digest some of this stuff and look at possible ways to mention financing. Most critical being the air handling units on this building. Unfortunately, there's fourteen. Well, let's do the renovation. And forgive me, because I wasn't, wasn't there like air conditioning that added to this building, or other schools?
Other schools, the school added.
So we added it to a few.
To the entries.
Yeah. So there was no, nothing figured into the referendum for the air handling. Uh, there was, and the priority really switched to the two entries. And as those needs of those two entries kind of grew, it was fairly early in the project that we said we can't afford to do anything out here. Being it was the newest building at the time, like Grant announced thirty-two years old. So those air handling units are probably at end of life. We're getting weirdly damn close to it. So those air handling units are probably at end of life or getting really damn close to it. So more to come on that. We, we just need to digest what they told us tonight and figure out ways to do some or all of it. But we had some, uh, requests from, um, some folks in the public as far as what, what are we going to do? Especially with the tennis courts. And one of our, our takeaways was to find out how much that would cost. We all know now that it's about just over a million bucks to do it.
And the baseball field has been important involved more than once?
Yeah, the baseball field requires, uh, uh, whoever built it the first time, I don't, I don't know where they diagrammed from, but, um, the fences are, the, the backstop's too far away, uh, the dugouts are too far away. Um, the, the fences in the outfield are eight to ten feet high. And so really that one would have to shrink and, and potentially have to move the entire field closer to that, that backstop. And then some more, uh, irrigation and some drainage to do with that. I don't know who designed that one, but. So more to come on that. Anybody, any other committees? Okay, then we'll move on to any other business. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Scott?
I'll second.
Second by Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host, motion carries, very adjourned, thank you.